We'll bring this into the.
Well, that's a good opinion, thanks.
So what we could do is we could, we could still do that.
Yeah, see what they think. Can you go to the meeting this one?
We have tomorrow. Oh, you mean that long work, that up to me to work like tours. Yeah.
And then I'll come for you and I'm like.
Oh, I'm going to the meeting tomorrow and I'll be mine.
All right, well, what's the deadline, what's the timeline on that basket? We can get something, we can pull something together.
Yep, no problem.
So if you want to peek in my office, you can get eyeball by the container we have.
Do you want to use the ruler as the basket? How big is it?
It's like, I don't know, 50 quarts, I don't know. Yes, it's a lot, like at least 50 quarts.
Is it wheels on it?
No, it's only $40.
All right. Well, I found the crap downstairs that he always got.
Cause you're right in the middle of like.
Crap?
No, but.
Yeah.
We'll pull stuff together and she'll decorate, she's got herself. She can make pretty baskets. And the variety team probably.
Catch you a little off guard, but she works well under pressure.
Yeah, so here.
So the way I read this. Have a full, well, we want. They gave out expenses, the one year it was an expensive expenses. And we were too fast, so they were like all gone.
Somebody back there in that room? I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The rule call this evening. Chad Rittenhour is absent. The rest of the directors are here. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
By. Let's do this and then we'll do that. Okay, motion and a second. So Todd and then Ben. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
That passes five one.
I'd like to make motion to amend the agenda.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the agenda for a referendum discussion tonight so that we can consider an elementary school that we need and possibly some classroom size with that.
Okay, so there's been a motion made. Is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Dan, all those in favor say aye.
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 Three, opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Nay. Oh lordy. I think tie goes to. Doesn't pass?
Yeah, tie is no.
Tie is no, okay. So a tie is no, so we go back to the original approved agenda. All right, consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless a board member or citizen requests it. In tonight's consent agenda is the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the bank reconciliation statement, the approval of the school board minutes from July 11th and July 18th, residentations, terminations, non renewals as listed. Also the general services fee for the membership in Metro ECSU for 2016-17, the Normandale Community College income contract and the Hennepin Technical College income contract. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agendas as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
I'll second that motion.
By Rich, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? That passes six zero. Next up is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. The board packet as a list of the gifts, which I don't believe we have any tonight. To double check that. Unless someone else is seeing something, I don't see any gifts.
I don't know.
Okay? Yeah, I don't see any gifts. So we can go beyond that. We don't have any. Next up is Laker Pride and special recognition is the Laker showcase with the, are we doing one at a time?
Yeah, we'll start with the lacrosse team.
Okay, and the Prior Lake High School Boys Lacrosse Team, the state champions.
Good evening, everyone. I will wait for the team before I begin. Excellent, tonight we have, woo-hoo! Tonight we have the incredible honor of recognizing the first state championship team since 1977-78. In front of you are members of the 2015-16 Boys Lacrosse Minnesota State Championship Team. The Prior Lake High School Lacrosse Team completed a very historic season under the leadership of Coach Chris Fleck and his staff. After starting the year with a 5-4 record, the Lakers rattled off 10 straight victories on their way to a state title. The boys won the section six title by avenging regular season losses to Bloomington Jeffers and Edina. The Lakers defeated Breck 12-0 in the state quarterfinals. They battled Eden Prairie in the state semifinals, winning nine to seven. This set up a rematch versus the number one seed Lakeville North in the finals. The Lakers took control early in the game, scoring a consecutive seven goals, all in the first quarter of play, and that's what they would need to win. The final score was 12 to 5. We are so proud of you athletes. We're proud of you, Coach Fleck, and your entire coaching staff. And we're proud of the parents, the community, and the students who came out to support these fine young gentlemen all season long. So I'd like to congratulate and recognize our state champions. I'd like Coach Fleck to say a couple words and then we'd like the boys to have an opportunity to introduce themselves as well.
Thanks, Darren. Thanks for having us out here, guys. Just want to say thanks to the school board. Without your guys' commitment to Prior Lake Athletics and, you know, putting resources back into our community and getting the facilities that we have, we couldn't have gotten to where we are. You know, being able to have the turf fields, being able to do the 6:00 AM practices early on in the season. We couldn't do that with grass fields before. That's been a huge asset to us in our development. So anything you guys can continue to do to support the facilities and getting us better facilities, that's always a positive. Big thanks to the team here. As you guys heard, we started our season a little tough with a five and four start. We rattle off 10 wins from there. These guys really came together, really played as a group. They were really a team and they came together. On the back of our shirts, we have a saying, "All in." That was our motto and we really stuck to it, so. Thanks, guys.
My name is Preston Jalen. I play defense and I'll be a junior next year.
My name is Max Volick. I'm also defense and I'm going to be junior next year.
Noah Orm. I was the goalie last year and the senior captain.
Ryan Larson, senior midfield.
Artic Collins, I was a tackman and going to be senior next year.
Brian Cartwright, I'm going to be a senior next year and captain.
Tyler Wideroff, I'll be a junior next year and I'll be a goalie.
Bennett Holst, midfielder. I'll be a junior next year.
Devin Chusso, I'll be a tackman and I'll be senior next year.
Marco, and my favorite memory from the season was shutting out Blake. First game in the state tournament.
Again, congratulations, and I just wanted to add one more thing. I don't know how many of you saw, but the article when, after you gentlemen won the state tournament, the first line of the article in the paper said something about two letters, one, what was it?
One two-letter word.
That's what it was. One two-letter word that you all gave credit for winning the state championship. And what was that word?
We.
Yeah, what an awesome lesson that goes and extends well beyond any playing field, into life, into teamwork, into sportsmanship. It was an absolute pleasure to watch you win the state tournament. Thank you for being here tonight and congratulations. Yeah, we've got certificates. We'll give them to Russ as you go out. And it was state championship after all those years isn't enough. We have another amazing celebration this evening. I would invite Principal Richardson to come up along with his students and staff. Tonight. Tonight, we are celebrating Glendale Elementary School, who were recently honored with the 2016 U.S. Department of Education Green Ribbon Award on Earth Day this last spring. The Green Ribbon Award recognizes schools for their reduced impact on the environment, improved health and wellness, and effective environmental and sustainability education. Glendale was nominated by the Minnesota Department of Education to be considered for this recognition. Recently, a delegation from Prior Lake Savage Area Schools visited Washington DC to receive the Green Ribbon plaque, which is being held right now. And it will be proudly displayed in front of the school's front entrance. I know we had some conversations of where exactly that would go, but we're all looking forward to seeing it promptly on the wall. I attended that along with school board member, Richard Wolfe, Principal Sam Richardson, and teacher Michelle Jensen. It was powerful to experience and reflect on the many innovative things that are happening in our school, at Glendale, in our district, and across the country. And really, we're excited to see the great things that are happening in terms of environment and sustainability. I'd like to hand this off now to Principal Richardson to talk more about the specifics of our staff and students in front of us and the amazing work that they're doing.
Right. Thank you, Dr. Stallow. We have some fantastic students with us tonight. They have interrupted their summer to come and celebrate with us. You are looking at five of the members of our junior naturalist crew and they work under the direction of Gina Schumacher and Michelle Jensen, who are the advisors for that program. And they do a number of things for our school and we were able to, in the process of applying and completing the process for the green ribbon, to reflect on all those things. So everything from providing leadership at Field and Leadership Day and to carrying out fundraisers at our school to support the addition of bird feeders and other outdoor learning space additions and then supporting those different efforts by also teaching students in our school about how to protect the environment and how to support a healthy environment. You know, these students are really well-prepared to be good leaders. Some of them are going to middle school next year and others will be back with us. So we have Zach Landis, we have Ava Parker, Claire Bodine, Rahena Medina, and Shruti Varanayath. Can we give them a quick round of applause? And then also staff members who were integral in writing and reviewing all of the green ribbon process to apply. It was a thorough process and we had help from Jim Delwo and others from our district, Janine Peterson and LeAnn Wyrock. And we also really benefited from going through the process to see all the history and the different things that have happened in our district and in partnership with our cities, Prior Lake and Savage, over the years. Julie Donahue, fourth grade teacher, has been helping lead many of these efforts with our environmental education committee. We have Michelle Jensen, who I mentioned before. Michelle teaches third grade and has done junior naturalists and been a key member on our environmental ed team. Miranda Ginder was representative on the ESTEM committee, working to figure out different ways to integrate ESTEM efforts into our school. Megan Kettler, fourth grade teacher and avid outdoor enthusiast. We have Gina Schumacher, who was second grade teacher, member of our EE team. And Cheryl Holst, whose son was up here accepting the lacrosse award. So it's a mother-da-son night here. Cheryl's also a fourth grade teacher and was on the team that helped to tell our story and Prior Lake Savage Area Schools' story. So all these staff members have made a commitment to teaching outdoors, to embedding ESTEM and the environment into their lessons. So it's really a community award, it's a school district award, and it's a testament to the parents, students, and teachers at our school. So really, an honor to be in that group in Washington and in our school district. So round of applause for these teachers and students.
Congratulations. Thank you again. I think that same one two-letter word would speak for this team because it's a "we" that makes something like this happen. So thank you for your work and for representing Prior Lake Savage Area Schools so well. We look forward to your continued leadership as you make sure that you continue making the world a better place. Thank you.
Okay, next up is the open forum and it's a 15-minute time period set aside to receive citizen input through this open forum segment. I don't have anyone registered to speak tonight. And then personal items, Matt.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Stallow. First up this evening, I am recommending the following candidates for employment and I'm seeking board approval.
All right, do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Ben, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero.
And next up, I'm presenting the following leaves of absence and I'm seeking board approval.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the leaves of absence as listed?
So moved.
By Todd?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Rich, all those in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero as well.
And next up, on behalf of the, both the licensed and educational support staff personnel committees, I am presenting the following settlements and I'm seeking board approval.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the 2016 through 2018 ESS and license settlements?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Melissa, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero.
And just a very quick note, there are a couple of additional settlements that will be coming. We'll have those resolved most, more than likely by the end of September. But we, this represents the vast majority now of settlements that came at our previous board meeting and then today at this meeting this evening. Next up, we have a number of new and revised job descriptions. Two that I will highlight is the business services assistant, which was a board-approved position newly at our last meeting. And then also a new position being the child nutrition services coordinator, which will be a position that we will be discussing shortly.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the new and revised job descriptions as listed?
So moved.
By Ben, second by Todd, all those in favor say aye? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero.
And then first up for staffing requests, I have an additional staffing request for licensed staff members, for licensed staffing. And this is broke down into, broken down into a couple of sections here. First of all, we have a request for an additional three sections of elementary classroom staffing along with the corresponding specialist staffing that they need for their prep time. That is, and just to give you a sense of where we are too, that takes our current enrollment into account and will also allow for an additional approximately 20 students to enroll at the elementary level. We'll be watching those enrollment numbers very carefully to make sure that we don't need additional staffing on the 22nd. But we're confident that we will hit the number so that we'll be able to put all of these new hires to good use here and maintain the class sizes that we've had over the last couple of years. Similarly, at the middle level, we're, there's a two FTE addition there. This does, this will essentially, I mean, we're able to maintain our class sizes at the middle level as well. They're up approximately two sections there. And there will be a little wiggle room, but we're seeing a little less aggressive growth, although growth in enrollment at the middle level. You will notice that there's a zero-dollar figure attached to that. I wanted to make sure that we were making a notation here that we are making a staffing allocation change. Originally, in the spring, we allocated 3.45 FTE to the high school. Up to this point, only one of that FTE has been allocated to new staffing. And so for the time being, we're going to utilize two already approved FTE at the middle level. But as with all of this, we'll be keeping a close eye to make sure that we're not missing out on any opportunities to staff appropriately at the high school and middle level moving forward. And then you can see a small increase in our English learner, our EL staffing for next year. This will allow us to do two things. First of all, meet the needs of our EL learners, but then also with the kind of enrollment that we're seeing, we're also seeing an uptick in the need to provide a cultural liaison for individuals coming into the district that will allow us to be able to continue those services. What that is, just in case you're unaware, is somebody to reach out and simply work with a new family to the district to let them know what resources are available to them. So if there is a family that needs help receiving materials in another language, for instance, or if it's simply a family that needs help exploring all the options that are available to them through ECFE or other programs like that, this is a person of first contact so that they've got somebody that they can work with through that process. And we're not asking for an addition to that at the moment, but this will allow us to continue to operate in that fashion. And that's what I've got on the licensed side.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the additional staff, licensed staff for 2016-17 as listed?
So moved.
By Melissa, second?
Second.
By Dan, all those in favor?
One question.
Okay, go ahead.
I know, I was looking back at some of the post-it notes that Julie put up and she listed that a total of nine additional staff members for this budget that we were going to budget for this coming year. Where does this put us then on that nine?
So that, that initial nine is what the board approved in the spring. So all of this constitutes, all of this that has dollars attached to it constitutes an increase. So the two at the middle level is a shift, not an increase. So you're talking about the 3.6 FTE at the elementary level and then that .1 EL increase there. So that's really what the overall staffing increase looks like for classroom staffing.
We have some additional headroom then? If our budget, if enrollment goes above, or does this take us up to that total of nine?
Yes, we're already, this takes us above that to actually a total of 12.6.
Okay.
Yep, but we do have the corresponding student enrollment. And so this isn't simply an expenditure without dollars coming with those students into the district.
I just wanted to clarify that, thank you.
Yes.
And we do have the meeting on the 22nd, in case.
That's correct. We have that meeting on the 22nd. And, you know, we're really cognizant, like I said, you know, we're very slightly overstaffed at the elementary, but we're very confident we're going to get there and we want to be as proactive as possible to make sure that we can get, get a good teacher in there for day one.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six zero. And next up.
All right, and next up, we have an educational support staff staffing request here. And this comes in a couple of different areas. First off is a child nutrition services coordinator. And this is a position that would represent the second administrative position that we would have in our child nutrition services programming. We have seen some significant upticks in the amount of responsibility, frankly, within that programming. There was really a. There was really a successful transition off of the federal program at the high school, but with that and the addition of a coffee shop has also come a lot of, come with a lot of marketing needs, and you know, opening that coffee shop was really akin to opening an elementary kitchen, you know, a fairly large one at that. And then we've also seen increases in our general populations at all of our, at all of our sites, which has necessitated increased staffing responsibilities there and oversight responsibilities, but then we've also expanded those offerings at Edgewood, too. So when you look at all of that, there, there is a need for some additional oversight within that program. A couple of notes. Number one, this will be fully funded out of the child nutrition services budget, and they do have the ability to do that. There's also a definite sense from Janine Peterson that there is a lot of potential left to see increased utilization and participation in our, in our services, and she believes that having some extra support there will allow us to achieve that. Next up is a special education liaison for community, for community education programs, which is something of a mouthful. I'll break out what that person is really going to do. We have incredibly robust programming, especially our before and after-school care programs, and with our early childhood programming as well. And what we've found is that as those programs have expanded, so have some of the special needs of participants in those programs. And this is somebody who will be completely funded by community ed, who will work in close collaboration, will in fact be supervised by our special education department to make sure that we're training our staff appropriately and offering the right accommodations so that all of our students can be successful in the programming that we have in the district. There's a request here for a special education paraprofessional at Jeffers Pond that's simply driven by the IEPs and needs that have come with student, with students coming into that, into the settings there. We have a natural, a naturalist position. So over the last two years, the district has collaborated with the Three Rivers Parks District to provide a naturalist to work primarily with our elementary educators, with our elementary teachers, in order to enrich curriculum, provide professional development, and to work with kids and provide hands-on learning experiences. And part of that was the Three Rivers Parks District was able to subsidize some of that work for us. They're not in a position to be able to do that any longer. However, we've seen a tremendous benefit from working with the naturalists that we've had, that we've been collaborating with over the last two years. The consistent feedback that we've gotten from all stakeholders, especially our staff, is that this is of a high value and really touches our, our students. And so we're looking to continue with the same level of service that we've had from a naturalist in this position as a .5 naturalist, and you can see the dollars associated with that, that will come from the general fund. Next, we have a request for a varsity assistant football, a varsity football coach at the assistant level, and then a ninth-grade assistant football coach. Both of those positions will be booster-funded and will allow us to continue or very slightly improve the student-to-coach, the athlete-to-coach ratios that we've had in the past. And then a varsiting, a varsity cheerleading spotter is being recommended here. We have spotters in our gymnastics program. It's, it's really an essential position in order to ensure safety for our students, and with the continued trajectory of cheerleading and cheerleading competition, they engage in a lot of the same tumbling and acrobatic activities that our gymnastics participants participate in, and this would give us a, a slightly improved ratio, but would bring us more in line with what the gymnastics team has for a coach-to-participant ratio. So with that, I make my request.
All right. Do we have a motion for the approval of the additional staff or the educational support staff for 2016-17?
So moved.
By Todd, second?
Second.
By Dan? Any questions? I just, for the child nutrition services coordinator, that person will be here at the DSC.
That's correct. That person will primarily be here at the district.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions? All right. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? That passes six-zero. Old business, we don't have any old business this evening. New business, enrollment update. Mr. Holberg.
Good evening, Chair Ruel, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. I'm here tonight in place of Julie Sink, who is not here tonight, to give you a brief enrollment, or update. She and I did meet and talk about the information we would be presenting this evening, and there is a memo in your board packet that provides just a quick glimpse and snapshot. I believe the last time you received an update was three weeks ago at the July 18th work session, where she was talking about some different things. And so, within the context of the last three weeks, we thought we would give you a little bit of a snapshot of what has changed. And as you look at the memo, you, you're starting to see a theme. We're seeing an increase of student enrollment coming into the district, and this is similar and consistent with what we've seen in the past, I guess, in a normal year, but we're also seeing some pretty aggressive growth coming in. Looking at that, when you look at the secondary total in the last three weeks, we've had 13 more students enroll. Our elementary has seen an increase of 33 more students, and so our grand total of 46 more students into the district in the last three weeks. Now, with that being said, this is the number of students coming in. We do continue to monitor students that are, and families that are leaving the district, and so we are monitoring those as well. I do not have that information for you this evening, but that's something we're going to continue to monitor here in, in August over the next three to four weeks with enrollment coming in. And I, you know, Mr. Mons and I were talking a little bit as we've talked about staffing this evening. It's probably a good idea, or probably a good thing, or something to foreshadow on the 22nd. We'll probably be talking about additional staffing requests on the 22nd of August, should this type of growth and the number of students come in. So the numbers that you have here are as of August 3rd, so last Wednesday. We, we've had families in every day on Thursday and Friday, as well as today. And so, the numbers that were, that are here are, are already old numbers, and as just a case in point, I was speaking with our enrollment person, we enrolled 17 new students today across the district, so.
Maybe we need a tote board outside the district office.
So we, like I say, we are in very dynamic times. You know, historically, this is, this, the next three weeks, we see a lot of families, consistently see families, consistency fam, consistently see families that come in to enroll their, their students. You know, it's getting that time of the year where it's the end of the summer, new residents are moving in, getting settled, and, and likewise, we'll also see some families that will withdraw because they may be moving out of the district, too. And so, we will be keeping you apprised of those numbers over the next couple of weeks, and we'll have a report for you on the 22nd as well.
All right. Thank you. Any questions, or, or Jeff? No? All right. We'll just keep watching.
Thank you very much.
Uh, next up is the student parking permit rates at the high school for 2016-17. Mr. Lund.
If I'm correct, everything was sent to you. What we're looking for this year, our, our current parking structure is $150 per parking permit for year-long parking. We'd like to raise that up to 200. You have a memo that, that talks about, number one, we get some, and when I talk maintenance increase in the parking lot, that's, we actually, you know, that offsets the campus supervisors. If you're going to sell parking permits, we don't have it staffed on a, you know, hourly basis, but we have to put people out there checking parking permits, checking where the kids are, putting sign-ups. That's the maintenance part of it. The other part, the big part there, you'll see that there's an incentive for carpooling. We are increasing number of students. We're not going up that many students necessarily in the high school, about 20, but this freshman class and the sophomore class the last two years, a lot bigger than the senior classes were going out. So we graduated 617, but the 10th graders last year were about 680, so that puts, you know, 60, 70 more drivers in the mix. The ninth grade coming up was about 680, 690. Halfway through the year, they're going to get their parking permits, and, and the bottom line is, we're going to have a lot more students parking. So you saw the letter that I included, changing the parking rules, making accommodations for MNCAP students, making accommodations for PSEO students, making accommodations for work program students. What we'd like to do is raise our parking to $200. We did a comparison, it was done last spring by the APs, of some random schools in the area. You can see that Apple Valley High School is the only one. We're currently at 150, they're at 180. The next closest was 220. That was Chaska, now these were last spring numbers. So what we are doing is, we want to incentivize the carpooling. Eventually, I see that as going to be one of the big solutions to our parking in the high schools, insisting on carpooling. You can see here that Edina and Minnetoka require it. What we'd like to do is raise the fee, offset some of the cost, but also incentivize the parking, or the, the carpooling, to get students used to the idea, to try to get that to be a thing that, that is a sought-after choice, and not just something that, you know, we're going to have to do, which we probably will. We also are going to start out selling to seniors and juniors only, and seeing where the parking goes. There are students who are going to MNCAPs, those are the students who are going to work program, and those are the students who are going part-time concurrent enrollment. You know, they'll come for two hours. So we really need to prioritize those students for, for the parking. So beyond just the, the raise in the price, you will see, we included the whole letter to try to explain to the board what we'd like to do to parking this year as our, as our parking problems increase and our spaces don't.
Too many questions? Go ahead, Rich.
How do you regulate the carpoolers? How do you know that you have two in a car as opposed to one?
Uh, the two, there may be one in it, but the two drivers have to sign up for the permit, so the permit will be assigned to those two drivers. So let's say you and I have a, maybe one day you drive, maybe the next day I drive it, but there's still two cars sharing that one parking spot.
Okay, so they only get one sticker then?
They only get one sticker, and both their names will be on it. They're not going to get two stickers, they get one sticker between the two, and both of them have to be licensed drivers. And that's the other thing in there we run into every year. Anybody buy the permit has to be a current licensed driver. You can't say, I'm going to get my permit and, and reserve a spot for those. You have to have it in hand, and so it's two people to one. And, and we've talked to the schools that do it, and there are more schools that looking, are looking at that for the simple fact there's just not enough parking to go around. And, you know, it's, it's a minor forage into a little, little bit more of a green school, at least there's, you know, more kids using the same amount of cars.
I could ask another one. Are we raising it enough to dissuade some?
We will see. I am not sure how popular the carpooling option will be.
Okay.
We're going to have to monitor and adjust like we do with anything else. And, you know, we looked at it last spring, we talked to other schools and thought, well, let's give this a shot, see how it works. There's always go through it for the year, you know, we got to say, because we're, this year's not going to be as critical as we know the next four or five years will be, so this is our step in to try to slowly work into it. Two years ago, I think was the first time we actually ran out of parking spaces. Till then, we had unlimited, and since then, it's been crunch time ever since, and the need arises every year.
Thank you.
Okay. Dan had it.
Dave, how many actual student spaces are there at the high school? Do we have ballpark?
About 800.
800, okay. So by making accommodations for the juniors and seniors because of their different programming, you have enough space for?
We did last year. We had enough for all the juniors and seniors that wanted, that, that came in time. If a junior came in in January and said, oh darn, I forgot to buy my permit, we may have sold that to an underclassman, where this year, we're going to hold back on that at least till halfway through the quarter to make all our juniors and seniors, but we did look at that. All the juniors and seniors that wanted permits last year got them, and even those that didn't get them but came in late could have had them. So we're basing that on last year's numbers. It can go up, it can go down from year to year, depending on how many students have cars and gas prices and so, which are low now, so. Does that answer your question, Mr. White?
I think so.
And then, I just, on the daily, so how do you monitor the daily? Like, I mean, I, because I know, like, the sophomores who get their license, you know, they wanted to start to drive, and so.
I'd have to, it was, and, and assistance, right, but we only allow 20 to 30 daily permits, and I think last year it was 30 based on the fact that we have some permit parking by the, and we're ordering some new signs as part of the maintenance cost, but along the curb up by the softball fields, there's a spot. And then on any given day, there's a certain percentage of those students who have parking permits who are absent.
Right.
So the 30 permits last year worked out really well, we had enough up there. We never had anybody who had purchased a year-long permit come in and say, hey, your spots are filled. And so we send our campus supervisors up to check that. And then, in the spring, when our sophomores are all getting their license, that's when we really have to monitor, and at the end, we had to back down on the daily permits. Not as many people were gone, we have so many people involved in spring activities.
Right.
So it's a, it's a constant monitor, but most of them are up by the softball field. We post signs and they can park along a curb, and then our campus supervisors are out there four to five to six times a day, running the parking lots, running the permits, trying to make sure, you know, that we're monitoring the parking lot as we should.
Yep, go ahead, Dave.
Is the increase, first of all, what would the total increase dollar-wise be? I know that you have some that are going down, you know, how many carpoolers you're going to have, but is it, if it was, if it was all singles, it seems to me it'd be going up about 30,000 to 35,000 more in revenue. If you were just increasing the price as?
We're just increasing the price. We didn't come out with a ballpark, we want to generate this much revenue. It was too full, it was to, for some maintenance, but really, part of it was to incentivize that carpooling. The more kids that'll, that'll agree to carpool, we can service more students, especially when it comes to all the students we have that are involved in after-school activities. They all want a parking permit, and we're saying, well, then carpool. You all have people that live in your neighborhood, so, you know, we.
Is there necessarily a corresponding increase in cost?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
We just looked at what the permits were, what was being sold around us, how much, and we ballparked it on that and made that incremental increase, and hopefully, you know, it'll offset. I don't know, it's a, we'll see. Mr. Schutinger, actually, this came up, just so you know, Mr. Schutinger, before he took his new position, met with, and I don't have his notes here, except the metro school parking, he met with a group of students to come up with this last year. This was based on sitting down with a cohort of students, discussing possible programs, what would work, should we carpool, would we raise the price? How much would you raise it to incentivize the carpooling? You know, $25 is not a lot, but you know, at $125, and two of you splitting the fee, you know, you're really saving. So this wasn't just the administrator sitting down. Kevin sat down with a group of students, driving students, and said, okay, let's work this out, let's see what other schools do. What do you people think? And that's where they came up with this, if that helps any.
Mm-hmm.
And the idea was, you know, you have to make it attractive enough to go with the carpool, and we'll see how that goes, you know, and like, again, if money runs low, then I have to be very creative, but.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, so we need to approve these new rates. Do I have a motion to approve the new rates as listed with the carpooling incentive? I believe it's 125 a year for the carpooling and 200?
For a single, yes.
For the single, for a single driver. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Ben, second by Todd. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six-zero.
Thank you, and just so you know, by mid-November, if you're interested, we will have numbers of how many carpools you have. I mean, I think that would be good for the board to know.
Yep.
Especially as we move in, so we'll track that in the daily permits, and I'll have all that available for you, probably before then, but.
Okay. We have no policy this evening, and then administrative reports.
Excellent. Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community, and our collective work is focused on achieving that mission. And tonight, I'd like to highlight a couple things in which we've been engaged that demonstrate that work. First of all, the state standardized tests, the MCA data was released July 28th, and results indicate that our school district continues to perform well above the state's levels in math, science, and reading. As a district, our students increased reading proficiency by .1 percent, math proficiency decreased by 1.3 percent, and students demonstrated a 2.5 increase in science proficiency. A point of celebration in the district's elementary science scores was that this year, our students demonstrated a 12.3 percent increase. We attributed this increase in test scores to teachers, staff, and administrators coming together to develop new strategies for the curriculum. Replicating this process in math and reading will undoubtedly benefit us. Replicating this process in math and reading will undoubtedly benefit us. As part of our continued efforts to improve student achievement, we held our first-ever Building Instructional Leadership Team Data Retreat earlier today. We restructured our school leadership teams with the goal of ensuring that there is a team of teacher leaders and district leaders who collect, with collective responsibility for school continuous improvement efforts. Today, teams totaling 130 staff took time to examine their student data and align action plans and strategies to drive their improvement work for the upcoming school year. These teams will continue to meet monthly at least throughout the year to ensure student success. It really was a great day. I continued to be inspired by and proud of our teachers, our staff, and our administrators, and the amazing dedication that they have for student achievement. The conversations were incredible today. The focus of our teachers, as they really dug deep into the data and looked at improvement strategies, was really impressive. So it was a fantastic day, and I think a start of a really great way for teams to come together around school continuous improvement.
Thank you. Do we have any administrative reports? Any board reports?
Go ahead, Todd.
On, on July 18th, board members held a study session with the outcome. Board members will provide direction on a potential November 2016 referendum. The administrators shared lease levy options, building capacity, given multiple scenarios. The board collaborated for five hours to determine if we could come to a consensus to bring back a referendum question or questions to our committee for November. We discussed in detail items from the original proposal that could be postponed, eliminated, or completed with lease levy dollars. In spite of a healthy discussion, we did not come to a consensus to go back out for referendum in November.
All right. Any other reports?
And as you heard earlier, I had the opportunity to go out to Washington DC with the Glendale to receive the Green Ribbon Award. And something for the board, maybe to think about. Several recipient, recipients had implemented LEED certification or solar panels in some of their new buildings. So that's something for the board to think about. And it's always interesting to be near teachers. As they were reading all the accomplishments of all the other schools, they're going, oh, that's a cool idea. Ranging from the trash-in show to the bicycle-powered water pump for their garden. So that was interesting. And on a personal note, we had a little time to go see all the memorials in there. And on a personal note, the, we visited the Jefferson Memorial, and there was a nice quote in there that I saw, and I'm gonna read. Establish the law for educating the common people. This is it, the business of the state to effect. So, kind of rampant, circular, so. That's all.
Okay. Any other board reports? All right, seeing none. The future events. Currently, right now, candidate filings are going on between August 2nd and the 16th. Also, August 15th, we have our board development here at the DSC from 5:00 to 9:00. We'll have a light dinner at 4:30, for those of you that would like to come early. And then August 22nd, we have our regular board meeting, starting at 6 o'clock. And then we'll have a study session to follow after, after the, the board meeting. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Todd, second?
Second.
By Ben, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes six-zero. Good evening.